We'll call the meeting to order. Counsel, anything before we start?
No.
Okay. Mr. Bier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good morning. Welcome to the fourth budget workshop of the FY 25 season. Today, we're going to be speaking about our special revenue and enterprise funds. There's a lot of detail in today's presentation, and of course, you have in your backup all the spreadsheets. If you have any specific questions that won't be addressed in the actual slides, Mr. Ingram and his staff are here to pick those up for you if you'd like to inquire.
Mr. Bier, I do want to mention, I have a hard stop at 11:00 today. I have to go to Tampa, visit Tampa Bay meeting, so I don't know how long this is going to go, but...
Hopefully, not till 11:00. That would be, that would be a bad sign for me.
That would be, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to talk about most of the funds today, particularly, obviously, the ones that impact the public in terms of rates, and the ones, obviously, that there are projects and equipment and things of that nature. So, let's start with our Water and Sewer Utility Fund, which we know as Fund 410. We have two construction projects programmed in FY 25. It's, the first is actually Phase 1 of 3. This is a total estimated project of $6 million. Phase 1 is $2 million in FY 25. It's the Bannock Burn, Downs Avenue, Glen Arvin Water Main Construction Project. We are also planning to pursue a CDBG project on North 54th Street to do a water main design and permitting and water main construction there for $350,000. In this same fund, we're looking to acquire several pieces of equipment. The first is a front-end loader for $260,000. The utility department does not have a front-end loader, and when we have, for example, water main breaks and removing dirt and pipe and things like that, it would be helpful to have this also. When we have storms, not just hurricanes, but, you know, a bad thunderstorm comes through, there's debris and things like that, that this would be, this would help facilitate the cleanup. We're also looking to acquire a freight liner truck for $125,000. This would replace a 12-year-old F-550 truck that we have today. The F-550, due to its age and also probably just the capacity of things we're trying to move around the city, it really struggles. It's also extremely fuel-inefficient. If we acquire this truck, this truck, the freight liner, to give you a visual, would be comparable to the cab of our ambulances. So, that's what it's like. The F-550, we'd probably put into reserve and use it sporadically as needed, and if we found that at some point it was no longer required, we would auction it off. Also, looking to acquire an SUV for $60,000. Currently, we have a pickup truck that is used by the department director, as well as the city engineer. In addition, over the last year or so, because now we have a robust engineering staff, they're all using this one pickup truck. And so, we'd like to acquire an SUV to facilitate some of their efficiencies in getting out into the field. In the utility billing function of this, of this, of this utility, I should say, we have a meter reader truck, 2008 GMC Canyon. You've probably seen it go around the city. It's old, it's got some mechanical issues, so we'd like to replace that vehicle for $35,000. Also, looking to acquire a hydraulic pipe saw, push camera to replace our existing push camera. Push camera is, this is a, actually, a camera that goes into the pipe. It's on a rigid cable. It's really, it works for sort of short-length pipe, wider diameter pipe, and the one we have is no longer functioning. And looking to acquire a utility billing printer to replace what we have in the office here on the first floor. In terms of the actual water treatment facility, we have several initiatives programmed. The first is the Water Treatment Facility Study. We're required to do these studies from time to time. We just finished one for the wastewater side of our system. Starting in '25, we'll do the water. This will take likely more than one year to complete, and this study, once it's complete, will have a series of recommendations, which will feed our future capital program for the water treatment facility. It's programmed at $300,000. In the interim, before we get to that capital program, the facility does need building improvements. Certain things break down, or certain things need to be repainted or rehab, et cetera. We are programming $350,000 to do that. These dollars likely, very likely, will not all be spent in FY 25, but we want to put the pot of money there. It will carry over, so they can continue to do these repairs until we actually get the capital program outlined, and we move forward with some sort of an initiative. We are also proposing to install a security camera system for $25,000 at the plant.
Carlos, why does the facility study cost so much? I mean, you could go through that whole plant in a week. I mean, why does that take?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Tinch to answer that question.
It just seems like a lot of money to go through that.
It does seem like a lot of money, but if you think about what they're going to be doing, Mr. Mayor, they're going to evaluate the entire treatment system, as well as like to pump fields, look at options for future treatment, like maybe RO or UV. So, there's additional treatment options that they'll be evaluating. And as with, if you recall, the wastewater side, we just wrapped up Phase 2, and each of those phases were $200,000 each. So, we felt like, due to the increase that we've been seeing in costs for services, for engineering services, that the $300,000 would be a good placeholder. If it comes in less, that would be great, but we feel like that's a pretty solid number for now.
How often is that required?
I don't think there's a statutory requirement for the water plant to be evaluated, but to my knowledge, the plant has not been evaluated in at least the last 15, 20 years. The plant is getting older. The treatment process is also starting to show some age, and there are a lot of new things on the horizon regarding microplastics and things of that nature that people are, that we're starting to look at, that we're potentially going to need to treat for. And treatment for those microplastics are going to be very expensive, so that will also be something that will be evaluated during this process. They're called PFAS. So, those things are, if you know much about PFAS, they're basically everywhere and everything, in the rain, snow. So, they're trying to get that, those levels to something that they feel like is safe, and it's PPT, not parts per thousand, parts per trillion. So, that process could be very laborious and costly. So, that's something that we'll also be evaluating when we go through this process with some of the, well, we know what's coming down the pipe from EPA, and evaluating what proper treatment processes would need to be in place to address that issue.
Okay. Thanks. Anything? Okay. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
So, with those initiatives in mind, draw your attention now to the pro forma. This is a five-year pro forma for the Water and Sewer Fund. We are making assumptions of growth, which are noted at the, sort of, the top of this chart. So, 3% growth anticipated for fiscal years '25 and '26, 2% for '27 and '28, and then 1% for '29. If you look at the bottom of the last row, you'll see that that ratio of fund balance to operational expenses, we try to keep the floor at 25%, not go under it if we can avoid it, and it does stay at 25. This is basically inclusive of 5% rate increase each of the next five years, is what this is calling for. Any questions on that?
No, I thought we were, I was hoping we were getting away from the repetitive increases every year. I thought we had some significant, and I thought they were going to kind of taper off.
So, you'll actually see that in sanitation, which is kind of ironic, based on some of our experiences over the last year. What we see here in Water and Sewer, and Jim and his team, Mr. Ingram and his team, worked really hard at this, is there's a lot of capital, a lot of pent-up capital that needs to be addressed. And he actually massaged it to move the capital around strategically to allow us to stay at this level, because it was a little tougher. I mean, the plant, for example, what Mr. Tinch was alluding to, so the plant was built in 1979, a lot of the distribution system is old. There's new, the PFAS, I can tell you right now, from experience, up north, that if we are mandated to do PFAS mitigation, that will cost a tremendous amount of money, because the regulations are so stringent that they're actually not even scientifically supported, but there's been a lot of reaction to that, emotional reaction, and so communities are being saddled with those costs. So, this could change, obviously. I mean, from year to year, we revise the pro forma, so if we see that we're getting better growth, also, obviously, once we, if we get any new development and things like that, it could add to our growth numbers in terms of customers. But right now, on the horizon, we don't see a tremendous amount of that. There will be, for example, one apartment complex that may be developed over the next couple of years that we know of, that will add a significant amount of customers. But that's why our projections are where they are in terms of being conservative in growth.
Okay.
Now, we're going to talk about Fund 430, which we call the Renewal and Replacement Fund. For the public, this is basically a holding fund. It's fed financially from the Water and Sewer Utility. It's where a lot of the capital goes for equipment and things like that, for our distribution system. So, there's three slides here, so ask for your patience as I go through all of these. So, we've got a $7,500 for air release valve replacement. Again, these are periodic equipment needs. $15,000 for an electrical distribution breaker starter replacement. We have panels at a lot, all our lift stations that need to be looked at from time to time. $15,000 for wear plates, so I learned what a wear plate is. So, wear plate, metal plates that are used basically to combat the effects of sand in our reactor. But because that sand is, there's that grit, it's very abrasive, so the plates wear out after a period of time, so they need to be replaced. We also have $25,000 programmed to rebuild turbine pumps, so we have over 20 wells with pumps. Periodically, they need to be addressed. We have $40,000 to replace flow meters in our system, and $50,000 to rebuild our water supply wells. We also have $50,000 for line-stopping program, so this is another thing I've learned, what line-stopping is. So, if you know, for example, every so often, unfortunately, we'll have a water main break. If it's something that can be handled by what's the infrastructure that's already on the pipe with nominal repair, that's the easier repair. However, there are times when we have to actually stop the line, close the line off, cut the line, bring in a whole new valve connection, et cetera. That's what this would be for, this $50,000. We have $60,000 for a valve replacement program, again, ongoing improvements to the, to the system. $80,000 for a submersible lift station pump. $25,000 for miscellaneous lift station electrical components. $200,000 for continued sewer main rehab and lining. This is a yearly program where we actually come in and put that sort of synthetic line through the sewer pipes to prolong their life. $75,000 to rehabilitate our manholes. So, we have 1,900, I learned this too, 1,935 manholes in the city, and every year, we have to rehabilitate a certain amount of those. And then, we have $85,000 for a flow meter at Lift Station B. To conclude Fund 430, we are planning for design and permitting of a replacement of the gravity main. We call it here Queensway and Fowler. This is actually the service that provides gravity main, gravity sewers to the west side of Teresa Arbor. So, this is $100,000. Next year, you'll see the actual construction for this amount, for this project. We're also proposing to replace the aerial sewer pipe on South River Hills Drive. This pipe actually runs from Riverside Park, heads, flows easterly through the new area that we proposed for our new park on South River Hills. Troy will be working with Carl as part of the whole design effort, as how they relocate the sewer and what they do with it. We are also proposing to continue funding for the lift station at River Run, that rehab construction. Last year, we had $450,000, which was sort of the first slug of investment. This year's the additional 300, which will close that project out. And we have $125,000 programmed as a match for a grant. Troy's worked very hard to get a grant from the state to harden the wastewater maintenance shed over at the treatment facility. This match is likely to come down, this number, because as they progress through the grant process, the actual grant amount looks like it'll be less, so our match will be less as well. But this would probably be the max that we'd be obligated to put into that investment. All right, turning our attention now to sanitation. So, again, I want to recognize Mr. Warren Felts and Mr. Munoz, the sanitation manager, for all the great work that they've done a year ago. And when we talked about sanitation at these very same workshops, the picture looked pretty bleak. I think now, the picture is, it's a 180. I mean, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. Both those gentlemen have worked extremely hard to acquire new accounts. We have over 40 new trash accounts. They are closing the deal with Amazon, the Amazon Fulfillment Center, to add them as a customer to our, our service routes. Mr. Munoz also brought his experience from the private sector and actually has software that allows us to do route optimization. So, when we talk about being a high-performance organization, one of the things is, you know, trying to figure out where our inefficiencies are, what can we improve on. So, that route optimization program allows him to figure out, okay, how can we get our drivers the quickest amount of time to these, to these different locations, also reduces fuel consumption and things like that. So, that's definitely something that hadn't been done in the past. We have made significant strides to improve our billing practices. You'll all remember that a year ago, Mr. Warren Felts started, he identified over 52 delinquent accounts, that some of them were extremely delinquent, and him and his team have worked through all of those. So, today, those accounts are all gone. Every month, we may have a small handful, but those are just regular sort of delinquencies you expect in any billing cycle, and those are addressed very quickly. So, in light of all these improvements, we feel comfortable making a request for staff and some capital, which is outlined as follows. Looking to add a driver collector wand position, which is between wages, fringe, payroll tax, and everything, totals about $69,000. Also, looking to acquire with cash, this is not going to be a loan like last year, this is cash, would be a commercial front-load truck at $400,000 and a commercial roll-off truck at $300,000. Now, this goes to the adage, you have to spend money to make money. If you saw it, the first thing I mentioned is we have over 40 new accounts. We're picking up Amazon. We have trucks in our fleet, in our sanitation fleet, which are 24 years old. And on any given day, if we have six trucks on the road, three of them are in the shop. And so, it's just a challenge. We need to make sure we update our fleet. We hadn't done that for years. We started last year. This is going to be a continuing process now, because now, like I said, we see the positive end of this, of this journey, right? We're starting to see that we're going to get customers, we've measured out, we're going to get new revenue. You'll see that with the pro forma. So, we feel comfortable, again, recommending that these purchases be made. We're also looking to acquire a Ford F-150 pickup truck for $65,000. Currently, there's one pickup that Jason drives, Mr. Munoz drives, and other folks in the sanitation department, my, division, I should say, will, will use. This would add a vehicle, because we all see Jason's always out in the field, Joe's out in the field, so this would facilitate them getting, getting around.
Can we go back to that for a second, Carlos? So, I see we're buying two trucks, one, but they're both commercial. I mean, are we doing, I know our fleet is old. I'm trying to get a sense of where we are for like the rear-load residential trucks. I mean, are we, I know there's times for a variety of reasons, whether it's shortage of crew, or the incinerator going down, and the travel time is more, or the trucks are broken, but I know there's a whole range of reasons, but I know there are times when there are significant delays, either picking up late in the day, or picking up, missing a day, or... I'm trying to get a sense for our fleet. Is our fleet a major driving cause of this? Are we, with the addition of these two trucks, are we going to be okay? I mean, and I know we don't love to have all brand-new trucks, but I mean, are we, where are we on the spectrum of everything's brand-new and we're driving relics?
Right. So, yeah, we're closer to the driving relics side of that spectrum than everything's brand-new. So, there's a few things going on here. So, last year, we ordered a, Ray, before he left, Mr. LeBlanc had recommended ordering a recycling truck and a grapple truck. They've acquired those, those vehicles. We still haven't even seen the vehicles. They're still on back order, like everything else. So, we're still waiting on that. So...
Really?
Yep, yep, we are. These vehicles here would probably take some time. I know Jason's looking, they've looked to buy things just off a lot. Forget about customization, forget about already just going to law and saying, "I'll just take that, and I'll make it work," because this is what I, I just need to get going. As to your question about the residential, yes, absolutely. We're going to need to replace our residential trucks also. But what I was getting at is that we, the fund, and you'll see this, the fund can't afford to do everything right now. I mean, we're, we're not hitting our reserves with this, these acquisitions. You're going to see in a second that our reserve number is below 25%. But we can accept that, because when you look out in the out-years, with new revenue from these new accounts, we're in a better position. So, we'll get above 25% within a couple of years. But we got to do it slow. We can't afford to just buy all the trucks that we want right now. If Jason had his way, I'm sure he'd love it. Like, he'd order 10 trucks and everything. So, we're trying to be selective. Commercial is, it's a big revenue generator for any, any solid waste system. We saw that last year when Session was in place, you know, all these, the bill to, they wanted to pull all the commercial away from the cities, because that's where you generate a lot of the fund that helps us to offset some of our residential expenses. So, he's trying to be strategic with his acquisitions to find, like, where can we get the most bang for our buck right now, build up the fund, get it to a place that now, a year from now, now we have more money, now we can start talking about, let's get some residential trucks in our inventory.
Okay.
Okay, with sanitation, so again, same growth assumptions we had for water and wastewater here. You'll notice that along the, the top of the chart. And you'll see, as I mentioned a second ago, the ratio of fund balance to operational expenses, the first two years, FY '25 and '26, it's, it's below 25%. But then, it does go, it hits 25% for the remainder of the last three years. Also, want to point out, because of the, all the work we've talked about here, if you look at the rate increases, again, these are just tentative right now in the out-years, but this is how we're projecting. We're looking at 5% this year rate increase, 5% possibly next year, but then it goes down. So, it's going 4%, 3%, and 3%. Again, because once these accounts start to generate more, more revenue into the system, once we get our, our trucks, everything aligned properly, I think we're going to be in a much healthier financial picture at that point. So, that, that will hopefully be better for all our residents.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm looking this, looking at the screen. Yes, please.
So, with regard to, I know we talked about this a little while ago, but we weren't talking about enterprise funds in our previous. So, with regard to the tipping fees that we need to pay to the county for waste disposal or incinerator, whatever, are the anticipated, I, obviously, you know what is going to be the cost for next year, but are we guessing at the future costs, meaning we don't really know exactly what the rates will be in the future, or are we, do we have an agreement from the county that the rates are going to be whatever for the next 10 years?
Let me ask Mr. Warren Felts to come up, because I believe we have, there is an agreement in place, at least they had several years out. I just don't know if it can speak to whether it's 10 years, or maybe it's just a couple more years left in that agreement, so...
Because I know in years past, we've had huge increases in those tipping fees.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Counsel.
Morning.
We have an agreement with our annual. Mr. Munoz has already inquired what the expected increases will be from some of the facilities. 5% to 8% is what we are expecting from the county facilities, but I will tell you that we have, we have shopped collection sites to try and maximize our budget. One of those facilities will have a 53% increase October 1st. So, we're still doing our homework, and we truck to, when I arrived in October, we had three locations that we delivered materials to, solid waste, yard waste, things like that. Currently, we have six. We're continually to evaluate and find new places to haul the solid waste and the yard waste to. So, those increases, obviously, we won't go there as much. They'll, they'll become a backup location. Example, if the incinerator closes, we have to have a backup location to take the solid waste to. So, yeah, I mean, the pro forma looks good. I looked at that. I talked with Mr. Munoz, and, you know, we'll be okay. We just have to continually shop and make sure that we're taking the trucks to the, to the best location.
Okay. So, this, basically, though, it's not like with the wastewater treatment fees from the city of Tampa, where we do have a long-term dollar expectation. This is going, this could potentially change from year to year and location to location, as you find one location might be better one year, one location might be better the next year.
Absolutely. And some of the changes, we see mid-year. Republic Services had a 8%, 7%, 7.5% increase in January for us that we were not expecting. And that's when we really started to shop and find other locations. And Mr. Munoz is doing a great job. He sent me one, yes, Friday. He sent me one Friday, and the rate's great, and I was, okay, set that account up, and let's see if we can get some material to them. We're doing everything we can to keep the, the hauling fees low.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tamery?
Thank you. Will the incinerator still be our main dropping-off point?
For residential solid waste, yes.
Yes, because that's a big selling point to talk to our residents about, that...
Yes.
Even, even if the plastic bottle doesn't make it to recycling, it goes to the incinerator and produces electricity.
Correct.
So, we're still keeping that as our number-one target.
Absolutely. Yeah. Mostly, what we shop is the, the construction demolition debris and the Class 3 materials, which is mattresses, sofas, and things of that nature. That's what we shop the most, because we can find, and we have found, multiple spots that'll take that.
Okay. Thank you.
Not really related to the budget we're talking about, but since you're standing there. So, I know there's a lot of public benefit to having this service, but I also know there's a lot of inefficiencies and a lot of abuse to it. And I'm just wondering, have you taken a look at our annual residential yearly pickup? You can throw anything you want on the curb, and we'll pick it up once a year with the claw truck. I know there's a lot of abuse to that. I know landlords will often gut a rental property and then haul, if they've used the pickup service for that property, they'll haul it to another property they own, you know, and you've got cabinets and beds and furniture and it. Is that something that's on your radar, or is, I don't know what it is?
So, I would say, since I've been here, I've not seen abuse. The office staff do a, an incredible job of getting questions to me of, "This doesn't seem right," or they have, I mean, they're long-term residents of the city that, that work in our office, that they know what has happened before. Some of the things that might have been, ah, it's okay. And that's not how we operate. That's, you know, if it's correct, it's correct, and we, you know, we'll, we'll take it as they are allowed to and permitted to. So, I would say there's no abuse there. I mean, the bulk collection truck is extremely busy, but he's also effective and efficient, and we don't, for the most part, have material sitting around days in a row, 24 to 48 hours, and then that stuff's off the street and out of the way.
Well, I'm glad to hear. I know there has been abuse in the past. It may predate, maybe that's straightened out, but I do know. So, good, okay.
And even the drivers. I mean, the drivers are very good. They pull up to a site and have a question. If, you know, Joe and I can't answer, we go there and we investigate, and we get to the, you know, to the bottom of it. And mostly, and I think some of what may have was happening before, and we're still trying to curb it, is they were mixing materials for us that's expensive to dispose of in a mixed capacity, where the office staff are asking, "Please separate these materials, because our trucks can go to multiple locations for different rates," and, and that helps us.
Thank you very much.
May I, can I have him address your question, just in case he wants to elaborate on the question about the residential trash trucks and the approach here that we've got in terms of buying the commercial ones first?
So, first, I'll say the commercial trucks, the, one of the vehicles that's proposed, we've been renting a truck for nine months. And the reason we've been doing that is because the commercial fleet, the front-load fleet was, is dated, and it's extremely busy. So, we need three trucks to run every, we need three trucks to run twice a week. We have two trucks that run five days a week, so that other truck is a hit or miss whether we're going to be able to provide that service or not. The rental truck is sitting here as our, as our true backup. They, excuse me. The residential trucks, there are six of them. Since I've been here, there's been one that's been on blocks, looking for a repair. We, we finally acquired the part. It is the last of the parts. This is a 19-year-old truck that is looking for a part that is not produced anymore. So, the fleet manager did a, did a great job. After, you know, some conversations with me, he found the part, I think it was in Texas. We got it shipped over. Again, they're busy, so we need to get that thing installed, and then that truck will be up and back on the road. One of the, and I'm just, I'm going to digress here for one second. One of the challenges in its equipment, city-wide, is all these vehicles sit outside in the sun. And I'm, I'm going here or something, and I haven't said to Mr. Bier yet, but these residential trucks, they're out all day in the sun. They park in the sun on, on the weekends. And so, what we're seeing the most is, is hydraulic leaks from the lines, and that's because they're sitting in the sun, and they get used a lot, and they're under pressure. So, the downtime, maximum downtime we have for one of those is, is two days, but we do have a spare truck or two at times where we can run them around. So, the delays, some of the delay we see is a staffing challenge. We use a lot of temps, so when, and sometimes they're not available. So, we run into, if we only have one or two, then the trucks slow down. So, there's multiple factors to that, but the residential trucks, they're a lot better than they were. Actually, I mean, the fleet is. Fleet mechanics are doing a good job, so...
We have a 19-year-old garbage truck?
Residential truck?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two, two of them.
We have two 19-year-old garbage trucks?
Mm-hmm.
So, that alone is a testament to your shop mechanics, that they can keep these trucks going 19 years with the way a garbage truck is used. So, please tell them we mentioned that.
We, we don't take the defibrillator pads off. They stay on.
I mean, we're starting to get close to antique plate sucks.
19 years on a residential garbage truck is amazing.
So, the solid green ones, the solid green trucks? So the solid green ones, the solid green trucks you see, those are the, those are the old ones?
Okay. Anything, Council?
Thank you, Jason. Thank you for the work that you do.
Okay, so moving on to a question I'm assuming I would get, which is about glass recycling. So as the community knows, we had glass recycling until several years ago. The market at the time started to crash in terms of recycling glass. What I, last year, I asked Ray to look into this, and I've asked Mr. Warrenfelt as well, just periodically, where are we with this? So the marketplace is very, very limited. It's little to no market. In fact, what Jason found is that manufacturers of glass bottles and jars and things like that, they actually don't want to use recycled product. It costs them more, it messes up their system, it's better for them just to do things from scratch. The other issue that complicates this is depending, for example, on the color of the glass. Some glass, because of its coloration, is not recyclable versus others, or doesn't have the same value. So that creates a problem. So if we were to start this, the council said, yes, we still want to go ahead and do it, it would be all cost to the city. There's no rebate, because there's no market here. We would not recommend doing a curbside, because the co-mingling and the way our trucks oriented today, that would create more issues for us. So if we did want to do it, we'd have to do drop-off locations, maybe one or two drop-off locations. A couple of challenges with those, and obviously, people would have to go there, they, you know, they wouldn't have a curbside. More importantly, if you've ever seen these kind of drop-off locations anywhere, they become trash collection areas. People just throw out their household trash. If they throw household trash into these bins, then the whole bin is ruined, and we're just going to throw it out. So again, if council wants us to do it, we're open to it, we can do it, but we're going to run into a lot of, it's going to be basically a lot of headwinds if we do want to pursue it.
So I have a question about that, and I really hate to even be talking about it, because this comes up, and once it starts in the community, it starts, and then it dies down for a year, and then it starts again. So I get it, we've been through this many, many times, and in fact, I was talking to a friend of mine who's a mayor of a city in California recently, where they have this value-added tax and all the, I mean, they have a complex system, and, you know, they'll send you to prison for throwing a glass bottle away, and, you know, it's just about. So I asked him what they do with their material, and he said, well, we don't talk about that. And I said, well, okay, we're not talking about it, so, and so I'm not going to tell you where he's from, but I said, what do you do with it? They crush it up and put it in trucks and haul it to Nevada where it goes in a landfill.
Oh, my God.
And so it's, he says it's a big shell game, but in California, that's what's expected. The community would never let us throw glass away, so we throw it away in Nevada.
I've read that, actually.
Yeah.
And many locations, not just glass, but other items that people put in their recycling bin are actually just relocated from, the recycling truck takes them somewhere, and then that place takes that to a landfill somewhere.
So I guess the question is, every once in a while, when it comes up, we get told, you know, oh, this county has it, or this city recycles glass, how do they do it? We just had some more clarity on the answer, and I think the answer probably is, they just suck it up and pay the money to recycle the glass and take it to somebody. But that's what we get hit with as elected officials, is, well, this city does it, or that county does it, how come we can't do it? So if that's the answer, if we could just get some sense of, well, it costs, you know, $200 a ton, or whatever it costs if you want to pay that, but I don't think most people want to pay that, so.
Correct, so it is, it is cost. I mean, it's in, because there isn't much of a market, as your comments allude to, you're, basically, what you're doing is, in that instance, what they're doing is really counterproductive, because they have their generic waste stream. It'd be cheaper for them to just put everything in their generic waste stream.
And it goes, to Mr. Chambers's point, it goes to the incinerator, so it's not going in a landfill anyway.
Right, right, so if you're, so if you're splitting it up, and a lot of the product, as we found here, a lot of the product is going to end up in the waste stream, you're paying extra to do that whole process, and it's still going to end up, and a lot of it will still end up in the same place, so that's the issue. So this is really more of a, it's kind of a community philosophical issue. Are you willing to accept that you're going to pay more, it's going to be inefficient, and a lot of the product is not guaranteed to ever be recycled? But you're telling yourself that it is being quote-unquote recycled, and that's what it comes down to. From a financial efficiency perspective, we've been talking about making sanitation a very efficient operation. It doesn't make sense to us to do it, but again, this is a community decision, an elected council decision. If you feel strongly that this is where we want us to, you want us to go, then we'll look to pursue something.
Okay, to expand on that, I mean, I get this question, you know, not a lot, but Mayor's correct. Sometimes it just, somebody will mention it, and the next thing, it's all over Temple Terrace bulletin board, and it just blows up. And I don't really have great answers, you know. I mean, maybe that's my fault, but if you said, does Tampa recycle, I can't give you a good answer. So maybe if we had some of that information, that would help. I was thinking about a big, long explanation on our city website that people can go to, that we could refer to, but then again, that keeps it out front, and that doesn't make it go away. You know, every now and then, it goes away for a while. So I don't know, but I'd like to have some more information, you know, what's in the surrounding area. If we were to recycle glass, and you say it would be additional cost, where would that go? Who would be the, where would we take it? You know, what company around here? You know, the cost to ship to Nevada is pretty expensive from here. So, you know, what would be the options? And if the public, if the public knew some of the options, then maybe it wouldn't blow up so much.
So Mr. Warrenfelt actually probably has some of those answers, so if you wouldn't mind, could I have him come up?
You don't have to give it now, but it would be, like, maybe in a Friday report or something. I just need to know more, because every now and then, I do get those questions. Why doesn't Temple Terrace recycle? Tampa does. I can't answer if Tampa does or not.
Vice Mayor.
I like the idea of making sure we have numbers and an explanation, but is this the only slide we have about recycling, or is there, is there more?
No, this is the only slide.
Okay, so my question is about the cardboard recycling, and the kind of supplementary plastic and other materials recycling. I know that there was some kind of agreement with the local company about the cardboard recycling, which allowed us to bring in some revenue, a small amount of revenue that sort of offset the cost of the recycling program. And kind of as a perk, they also took our plastics and metals as well. And is that an agreement that's still in place with the local company, or is there something else going on in that, in that arena?
Okay, I'm going to have to ask Jason to come up, can I answer that?
Yes, Vice Mayor, the, the agreement, as it's aged, is still in place, but we follow the market value. So the recycling trucks that ride through the city, they do not go to waste recovery, they go to a specific recycler, which the city does receive a rebate for all the materials that we haul in there. The cardboard is a valuable commodity. We have been asked for cardboard, so we haul cardboard there daily. Two to three trucks a day go in there with cardboard.
Thank you. I will say that I had a lot of questions about recycling when I was new to council, and I even had a tour of that facility, and I asked the manager there some questions, and I was curious about the numbers, about how it offset the costs of the recycling program. And I was told that there was no contract, it was just a handshake and a wink that went on between this company. So I was wondering, what is the nature of the agreement with this company, and how does it offset the costs of the recycling program?
So the revenue, or the rebate that we receive from there, it's a small number, compared to what we expend for fuel and manpower and equipment. And I'll give you an example, yesterday, that one of the rebate checks came in, and it was right around $700. So that's probably a week's worth of material, right? So it, it kind of pays the employee to help us out. But, you know, as far as the agreement, I can, I've seen it once, but I can get a copy of that, and I can share with you. And maybe we do need to update that, but it's working, and we are getting rebates for it, and they, they give us latitude on when we are there. So it's not a 24-hour facility, but we have 24-hour access, so might have been a handshake and a wink years ago, but I definitely will look into it a little deeper.
Cool, thank you. And I think that that's important for the public to know also, is that we have this recycling program that we go through a lot of effort to make sure we're able to maintain a strong cardboard and other materials program in the community, because it's important to have recycling. But anyway, thank you for that.
I have a follow-up real quick.
Sure.
So back to that, so our recycling program runs at a loss, or is subsidized by the sanitation fees?
It's subsidized.
Residential garbage, yes, okay. That would be nice to know about a number in there.
Okay.
At some point. Don't need it today, but it would be nice to say, yes, we do this for our community and our residents. It's optional for them to put it in the recycling bins, but it runs at a loss, because some people out there think we make tons of money on the recycling.
Yeah, we, we do not. Even the commercial recycling, so we have cardboard, commercial bins at businesses throughout the city, those are no-charge services. They give us their cardboard, we get a little bit of a rebate back from that, but we supply the bins, we supply the truck and the manpower, so, yes, it all operates at a loss.
Okay. Is that, I mean, I don't want to give him work, you know, unless the rest of us agree that you might want those numbers.
I don't, personally, I don't care as much about the numbers, because they change anyway quite a bit. But my thought is, and I'm not a marketing guy, so you guys have to talk this around with our team and see whether this is a good idea or not. Don't do it just because I think it's a good idea. But there are a lot of people in our city who are very passionate about recycling, and they, about the glass, and about the, you know, this is just really, really important to a lot of people in our city. And I'm just wondering if, on our website, if we had a tab somewhere concerning recycling that talks on a level about, you know, recycling does not pay, it's part of the city's expectation, the community's expectation is, we want curbside recycling. And a lot of people ask about single stream, and we have to explain every so often why we can't do single stream. Then they'll ask about glass, and these emails take me a long time to write, and, because there's a lot to talk about. I'm wondering if a tab on the website that talks about the recycling program, maybe in a little more depth, and to point out to people that we don't make money on this, this is, actually operates at a loss, but we think it's worth doing. And our trash goes to the incinerator, reinforce that idea, and then have a bold tab, why doesn't Temple Terrace recycle glass? And go into that. That might, I mean, I don't want to cause you work, but we do get feedback from the community, and I've been in office eight years, and I've been getting this for eight years. And now, a link on the website's not going to make that go away, but it might be somewhere, it can certainly shorten the length of time I have to write the email. I can say, here's the link, and this has all the, you know, if you could talk that around at least.
No, we can do that. In fact, we're about to revamp, over the next month, revamping our website, it's getting an upgrade.
Good.
So now's a good time to include that. So Joel is in the back of the room, I'm sure he's taking notes right now to add that as one of the work items.
Is that, I don't want to ask them to do something unless the council can.
I think it's fine. The downside to any of this stuff, I think there's more upsides, but the downside is you get it out there, and people see it, and they, just like, I bet you a dollar, if Carlos didn't have the recycling slide, we wouldn't have been talking about this today.
Yeah, I know, but I, I know exactly what you're saying, and you're right, but I always think it's better to err in the side of.
Oh, sure, I agree. That's what I, you know, I asked for that a little bit ago, you know, some, maybe something on the website, so I think it's a great idea. It helps, because then you can just say, it's all, you don't want to say, well, it's on the website, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you could, we're not hiding anything on that.
So, I mean, the point of recycling, the purpose, would be to reuse materials and not produce new, with the thought process being, reusing uses less energy and is, is a better, is a more efficient way. But when that's not the case, when there's no desire for the reused material, then, because it costs, it actually uses more resources and costs more to produce from a reused product versus starting from scratch, then it makes no sense to recycle that product. You're actually counter, unfriendly environmentally. So I don't have an issue at all with putting that, putting something on the website that would explain, because if you, a lot of people, if they want to recycle, they're looking at trying to be more environmentally friendly, to use resources more wisely, but again, if the recycled product actually uses more resources, then that's not a wise use, and that's not environmentally friendly, and it doesn't make sense to do. So I don't have any issue with, even though it may open a discussion that people weren't really thinking about, I think, I don't have any issue putting something on the website that gives a little more background to why Temple Terrace chooses to recycle certain materials versus others.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I don't have any.
So just a little asterisk by this, if Gil is not here, I'm sure he'll be watching this, though. If he has any objections or comments or input on this, we would revisit this before we move forward. So if Gil gives us any, if he thinks of something we're not thinking of, I want to make sure that we give him an opportunity to, so, okay.
Okay.
Bet you're glad you put that slide in there, huh?
Trying to get ahead of it, now I regret it, so, yes.
Aww.
That's fine. Let's talk about fleet. So our fleet fund, this is another thing that I think we're proud of in terms of making some changes. So this year, in the budget, or actually organizationally, in the org chart, we have a, we have mechanics, and we have a fleet tech. The fleet tech was ostensibly meant to be sort of like the inventory control, parts ordering manager for the, for the fleet position. The person that was incumbent in that position, they left the city. At that time, Jason looked at this, and with Eddie, our fleet manager, and they looked at it, and they thought, you know what, we've got certain needs that aren't being met by the way this job description was laid out, we may need to change it. So for example, paperwork, you can imagine, we've just talked about the trucks being in the shop and things like that, well, our mechanics are full out, they're always working on these, on these vehicles, and they've made a lot of improvements, because for the first time in a long time, we're fully staffed. But the thing that was drawing us down, was a negative, was bills, inventory orders, things like that, they, nobody was really focusing on that as much as they should, because again, these folks were working out in the shop. So we have converted the fleet tech position to an admin assistant position, that was done already, and we filled it now, and now we're starting to see significant, they're getting through all those old bills, they're getting through the inventory, much better control now, there's still some work that needs to be done, but we're, again, on the right path. Mentioned a second ago, our vehicle downtime, because our mechanics are fully staffed now, significantly reduced. I think if you ask any of our department directors, particularly if you ask in fire with their vehicles, usually would take, you know, tremendous amount of time. I think those, those days of waiting for the vehicles to come back have dramatically changed. And what we're looking to request in FY '25 is to bring on an entry-level mechanic to do preventive maintenance largely, like oil changes, basic stuff. So this is not somebody who needs to be, you know, certified, you know, all kinds of ASC certifications. That would be a total between wages and fringe payroll taxes, maybe like $69,500 on the top end of the wages. But that would allow them to focus on that preventative side, allow the mechanics we have today to really focus, again, on the big repairs. You know, when an ambulance breaks down, it's a specialized repair. When a trash truck's got issues, like Jason was talking about, tracking down parts from Texas, or whatever it is, that's a lot more time-consuming, and so it frees them up if somebody else can do all the preventative stuff to get those vehicles out of the shop and back on the street.
That's a new FTE, or a re-class of an existing?
This would be an additional, additional FTE now, based on, in fleet.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yes.
How is the fleet fund funded? Is that a, basically administrative fee from every operation that uses the fleet services?
Do you want to address it?
So it's, it's basically a two-prong approach. When a vehicle goes into the fleet shop, they, and they do work on it, they will write up a ticket, whether they do it in-house, or they have to send it.
Whether they do it in-house or they have to send it somewhere else, they write up a ticket. They enter it in the system. When we generate reports monthly or sometimes quarterly, it will charge the expenditures, whether it's a part, if it's outside commercial labor or in-house commercial labor, it will charge back to the department that the vehicle belongs to. So we always have in our budget, you'll see there's some lines for that for each department. That alone does not pay 100% for fleet. So the other, the second prong is each fund, the water and sewer utility, the sanitation and the general fund, pay a quarterly amount and annual amount that we determine in the budget that will make the fleet fund whole at the end of the year. And that is based on a percentage of use. So sanitation actually pays the same amount as water and sewer because even though it's a smaller fund, their fleet needs are pretty substantial. And general fund pays the most because we have a lot of vehicles in general fund, especially with police. So that's how, that's how it's funded. We always try, you know, we have to make sure at the end of the year, it's at least at zero, at least at a breaking point. We have talked about, just in addition to that, Jason and I have talked about with this new mechanic and new FTE, the idea, the plan is to be able to get more work done in-house, which is less costly for us and not as much. Sometimes you have to send things out because we just don't have the expertise. But sometimes it's also because we just don't have the manpower, the labor available to get it turned around quickly. So that's the plan and we're hoping that will increase our labor fees from the departments and at the same time decrease some of our operational costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Tink. Just not with you, but probably Jason or somebody, just real quick. So when you get the new mechanic, do we have enough bays? Do we not have enough workspace? You can just say, just shake your head, that's fine.
Yeah, I always want to.
His indication was yes, so for the record.
I always wanted to know that too.
Okay. Moving on now to Fund 130, which is our street improvement fund focusing on stormwater projects. So the first three bullet points here are going to look very familiar to the council. These are the ARPA projects that have sort of been progressing along. As we've gotten closer and start to make inroads in these projects, either design engineering or getting ready to build, one of the things that's become apparent is that like everything else, things cost more than they were anticipated three years ago when we first got these ARPA dollars. So these amounts here are actually additional amounts to those original projects, but these additional amounts are coming from ARPA. So what happened, for example, is there was an ARPA project that we decided not to pursue. It was actually a stormwater project, but it was dealing, once we looked at it, it was really dealing more with the golf course. It was a really stormwater issue that was really germane mostly to the golf course and it had a little bit bleed over into the right of way. And that project in light of some of the other concerns in terms of how much we had to do and things like that, we decided we're not going to pursue that one at this time, using some of those dollars again to offset the costs for these three, which are sort of, which are sort of, but which are important to move forward on. So that's the direction we're going there. I just want to make it clear that these are ARPA dollars for ARPA projects. Also looking to acquire $25,000 for submersible pump replacements. $75,000 to do the design of a stormwater system for Brentwood Drive and South River Hills and that general area. Looking to replace our current bulk pickup trucks. We have a bulk claw truck in streets and they're looking to replace that vehicle for $325,000. We're also programming $150,000 to do the Chicago Springdale Pond Maintenance, which is dredging. So going back to, we talked about the aerial sewer and working coordinated with Carl. This is something else we want to coordinate with Carl to make sure that we dredge this in the way that's appropriate to whatever design we're going to do ultimately for that, for that area. But this is programmed because it does need to be, to be done. That's pretty silted up that area. So either way, whether we ever did the park or not, we would have to do this.
So are we, I always get nervous about these timetables with federal funding and state funding. And are we on track for all this ARPA money to be? Because this engineering, everything just takes forever to get something done. And I guess it's the design and the engineering or whatever, but we've had this, we'd never, it's years before you see anybody with a shovel.
Right, right. So we have been providing the council with those quarterly reports on the ARPA projects. Every indication we've gotten from Mr. Tink, and we can ask him to come up if you'd like, is that, yes, we know that we haven't really seen a lot of dirt turn, but the, when he plans out and he has the calendar of the way this is, things is going to roll out, we still meet the deadline. If you'd like him to come up, you can address the specifics. But I know every time you bring it up, I feel the same way.
Give money back because we didn't spend it.
Right.
Okay.
The second element of the street improvement fund are sidewalks. So these numbers will be familiar. A lot of these numbers are plug numbers every year. So we set aside $20,000 for ADA compliance in case we have a concern about, you know, approaches to sidewalks and things like that, tip downs. $40,000 for design and permitting, again, a standard number, recurring number. $250,000 for construction to allow us to address those sidewalk needs throughout the year. We have $100,000 here for the South River Hills Wooden Bridge. This is the sidewalk that's been out of commission for a while. This is also another item that's tied into the park improvement. So right now, we're going to coordinate with Carl and that team because if that design contemplates moving that sidewalk somehow through the park, then we wouldn't replace this wooden bridge. But if it, if it doesn't, in other words, if this still makes sense to keep that sidewalk the way it is, we'd want to use these dollars for that.
I would think we'd have to because if you're not visiting the park, you're just walking down River Hills.
It could be, it could be. I just wanted to put it out there for the council. That is one of the things we're going to be looking at. We're also looking to extend the sidewalk in telecom park. There is a sort of a gap in sidewalk there that's been recognized before, so we're programming dollars to do that. The last element of the street improvement fund are actually roadway investments. The first item, resurfacing. Council will know, last several years, we've done $750,000 a year. This year, we're doubling that to a million five because the cost of resurfacing has in essence doubled as well. A million five will probably buy us, and I hate to say this, it sounds awful, but it only buys you about two miles, a little two, between two and two and a half miles of resurfacing. Our, our street network is about 80 miles. So this will allow us to get to a street probably once every 30 years or so if we keep on this pace. And as the costs increase, we may have to increase this number as well. Right now, we feel like a million and a half is a good spot to be. So that, that's the plan moving forward. In terms of, we also have signage upgrades and replacement. These are standard cost items for $50,000. We have pavement markings for $50,000 and I want to give the council an update on this item. So last year, we put $50,000 in the FY '24 budget too. We have done some pavement markings already before the end of the fiscal year. And this is the, this is not an order necessarily, but these are the areas we're going to be working on. So North Glen Arvin Avenue and Woodmont Avenue, the roundabout near the golf course and Florida College, that's one that we'll be working on striping there. The crosswalks at River Hills Elementary School, also the crosswalk at White Way Drive and Gillette will be striped. Looking to redo the intersection at South Glen Arvin and South Brilling Game. Looking to do the crosswalk in the school zone at Temple Terrace Elementary School. And then looking to do striping in the Hidden Oaks neighborhood. So that's the remainder of the work program for FY '24. Also, we're projecting to do a complete street design on Sunnyside Road. That neighborhood, they've had concerns about cut through traffic and speeding, so this will hope to address that. We're looking to acquire an F-250 truck. It's going to be replacing an existing truck that's had some mechanical issues. That truck will probably go into reserve temporarily and at some point could be auctioned off in the future. We're also looking to acquire a tree truck. So this, this lines up a little bit with sort of this effort. We had dollars in the general fund to do a study, an urban canopy study, actually was out of the tree fund. So the logic here would be we have staff that does tree work. When we do the tree study, what we anticipate will be getting a program of how to do the best maintenance of our tree canopy in terms of healthy pruning and replanting and things like that. Currently, when we have tree issues, most of the time, we just farm that out to local tree companies to do tree services. What we are, what we'd like to do, we think would be a better plan, we really bring that in-house, get that study done, figure it out so we can stay ahead of this because our crews are working, you know, with water utility crews, things like that. So when trees come down and the impacts are in areas, we have to get in there. It would make sense for us not to have to wait for an outside service and pay their premium to have that work done. Tree truck here, we're talking about a truck that has an articulated arm. So we have a bucket truck today. This is different. A bucket truck, basically the arm goes up and down. This is, would be an articulated arm, might have like two or two joints. Would also have a protection for the cab. So one of the issues we've run into is we've used a bucket truck for some tree work, particularly if we identify it's a safety hazard in a, based on a tree limb. And we've had an instance where we'll cut the tree limb down. The tree limb unfortunately fell right on top of the cab. There was no protection for the cab because it's a bucket truck. It's meant to really address traffic lights, street lights and things like that. So we feel that this truck investment would be, would be better, would protect the cab. We have, we can get up to places we can't address today and really keep up with the maintenance of our tree canopy moving forward.
Yes.
So I like the idea of moving tree trimming in-house, but tree trimming is also very, very dangerous. And are there other external costs associated with us doing the work versus contracting that out?
There, well, there, anybody that has, that does this work will have to be trained. They'll have to go through all the safety training. I still anticipate there will probably still be a need for a tree service. For example, if we get, you know, a massive tree that is just beyond a pail, we may have to bring in a crane and things like that, we're probably not going to do that work ourselves, probably have to hire a service. But I think for the bulk of the work, we can handle that in-house with the proper training and the proper equipment.
What about like insurance costs for having that type of service in-house?
Sure. So the, the people, for example, if you are working, so when we get our, like workers' comp rates, for example, the workers' comp rates are different for, depending on what you do. So office workers, our rate's slower than if you're out in the field. So if you're a utility worker today, you're probably paying one, not you, the city is paying one of the highest workers' comp rates probably for those folks because they're in trenches, working in manholes and things of that nature. I would imagine that the rate for whatever staff ultimately works on tree services or on the tree service for the city will probably be comparable to that rate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So for the funding sources, so for the water and sewer fund, it's the water and sewer rates that we pay sanitation. It's our, the rate we pay for our garbage pickup. Can you talk about the funding sources for our street improvements and sidewalk improvements? And the resurfacing and the paving, et cetera?
Sure. So there's several funding sources here. If I missed one, just tell me. So we've got, we have the gas tax, we have impact fees, we have CDBG dollars as well. I mentioned there was a CDBG project as well. So we have at least those three. What else are we missing?
The fuel tax, the fuel tax is probably the, well, it is the biggest source. That brings in $775,000 a year. But I think you may have hit on all of them. It is in the detail in the 130, in the special revenue section. If I can just turn there so I can hit all of those.
I just want it to be where people who are watching understand that, you know, where these projects are funded, besides the ARPA, obviously.
Right. Local option gas tax, like I said, 75, $750,000 a year. There's a municipal gas tax that we get around $330,000 a year on. The ninth cent county gas tax brings back to us about $140,000 a year. Just in the last couple of years, we've also been earning interest in this fund. Which I'll add is, at the moment, it's, it's very healthy. We do get some impact fees and we're, we're looking into that to make sure that what, what we spend, if we use any of those dollars, the excess dollars we get for impact fees, which can vary depending on, you know, year to year, just like any impact fee based on development.
Impact fees, if, for example, we have a commercial development on a county road, since let's say, let's take Bullard Parkway as you go towards 301, that's a county road. What, how is the impact fee split? So, so we, the city of Temple Terrace does not own or maintain that road. It's, it's the county's property to own and maintain. So would we not get any impact fees for something like that towards, obviously, the road improvements or road maintenance? But we would still get a portion of the impact fee?
We, actually, I think we get, and Brian, can you come up? Mr. McCarthy, City Engineer, I believe we get all of the impact fee.
I know, this is a secondary question, but.
I know, but could we use the VA as an example since that's a perfect one?
We do get the impact fees.
Good morning, Brian McCarthy, City Engineer. And if it's on a county road, but it's a city property or within our jurisdiction, it would go towards the city. 100% of that mobility fee goes towards the city.
Okay. That's, I was just wondering that as part of the funding, if we had to split it. That's it.
Yes.
When we changed our tree ordinance to use the tree fund money, could the tree truck money come out of that ordinance money? The tree fund money, since we changed it, or is it just specific for tree work?
Well, I, so the, the street improvement fund is actually healthier financially. I mean, it's a much bigger fund. So from a, from a, in terms of proportionate impact on the actual fund that you're taking it from, it makes, financially, it would be better to do it out of the street improvement fund than it would out of the tree fund. Whether we can or can't take it out of the tree fund, that's a question for Jim.
Same for if we contracted out tree work, I assume that could come out of the tree fund now. Because the old ordinance was planting trees, now it's maintaining trees.
I'm not an expert on trees and I don't think Joe Ferris is here, but Jeannie?
The ordinance is to remove and. The tree fund is specifically for diseased and dying trees to remove and replace. So we could not take the money from that unless we amended the ordinance.
Well, we'll say that the ordinance does allow for the use of the A-tree for the operation of the program. So we have used it not for something this expensive, but for small pieces, tools, equipment that are needed to, to run our tree program. We do spend some general fund dollars for tree trimming around the city. That's outside of the A-tree fund, but we will also use the A-tree fund, which the balance right now is a little over a million dollars. To Carlos's point, our street fund is around $7 million. So it, it is one, I think, that could go either way. I think it's, and as Jeannie pointed out, really the, the main focus of using those A-tree fund dollars is the actual removing and planting of trees. So I think in this case, $400,000 tree truck, which supports the, over the streets, the roadways, that it makes more sense to fund it from there.
Okay. So the answer is we could, but probably don't want to.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the last slide this morning is, this is something that's occurred since the first workshop in June, or the second workshop, I should say. So in the second workshop back in June, we talked. So in the second workshop back in June, we talked about the CIT projects. And since that time, we've had an issue at the family rec complex's main pool. Carl and his team have discovered there's a crack in the main pool's filter pit. So to address that, it's going to cost us about $30,000. So we're adding that to the CIT. I wanted to make sure that it's very transparent to the council and the public that this is something we're going to add for next year's CIT. So that'll bring up the total funded by the CIT in FY '25 to $1,294,724.
Can, can you just, because I'm sure I'm going to get asked about this by somebody, can you just tell me what this is? The, yeah, where it is and is that in the pool or is it in the filter shed or what is this? And I, it's not a question of whether we're going to fix it, I just need to know for.
Carl Langford, Leisure Services Director, good morning, Mayor and Council. The deficiency that was discovered is in the main pool pump room. When you have a swimming pool, you're not allowed to suck water directly from the swimming pool through the motors and then back to the pool. That's an extremely dangerous situation. So there's another secondary pit that water gravity feeds from the pool into and then is sucked from there through the motors and back into. So that way you don't come into a situation where a child can get stuck on a suction port in the pool and get entrapped below the water. In that secondary pit, which is in the filter pit of the main pool pump house, the, the walls of that pit, which were, are original to the construction of the pool back in the 70s, have started to crumble and fail. They are still structurally sound, nothing's in danger of collapsing, but it is something that needs to be addressed sooner than later. So nothing's going to fall apart between now and the end of the summer when, when, you know, we're going to start looking and getting this work done, but it does need to get addressed.
So what will, what will we be doing to fix this? Will we be?
We'll be, we'll be demoing part of the pit where the, where the issues with the wall are and rebuilding that filter pit, then re-waterproofing the entire thing with either a Marsite or a PVC liner or, you know, some type of, you know, pool type finish, which is essentially what it is. It's just a small pool. To waterproof the whole thing and it will last another 50 years.
We're going to have to take the, the main pool offline while this is being done?
Yes, absolutely.
How long is it going to take?
About a week or two to do the work. And that's, we typically take the pool down in the order of time anyway to go through and do some maintenance projects in the pool that we can't do while it's open. So it's not going to be something that's out of the ordinary to take the pool down. We'll do it off-season, you know, December, January, when there's not a lot of usage to the pool anyway.
That's good. Yes. I can't remember, sorry. Do you still use DE?
No, no. When the ABM project went through, all those DE filters came out of that pit and they were replaced by those Hayrate sand filters that are now on the backside of the building. But that pit still has to be there for that safety between the pool and the filters.
Losing water right now?
No, no.
All right. Very good.
My question is not for you, it's about the CIT funds. I just want to clarify with the community investment tax funding, just so that people know, we can only use it for investment in long-range investment in the community, not for salaries and administration. But I would like to know, how, if, how long can those funds remain in the city's possession without being used? Do they ever revert? Let's just say, we have funds, we've received them from this tax, but we just didn't use them for a year or a period of time. Do they have an expiration date?
So, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we have an expiration date. It's never been, it's never been discussed anywhere. We've had conversations with the county and other municipalities about the CIT, particularly this year, because we're planning for a renewal. And in fact, even if there were, we're pretty good about it. I mean, we're spending a lot of the CIT every year and making significant investments. And that's the reason I bring it up, that's the fear, is if it doesn't get renewed, you know, what are we going to do? So we don't have a concern about that. We are going to go through the CIT every year. It's about, we're putting in about $2 million a year in investments in our budget from the CIT. So I think we're, you know, and God forbid it doesn't get renewed, we'll probably expend the balance that's left over within a period of the next, probably three to four years at most. We'll go through all of that. So I don't think there'd be any risk whatsoever of us having to give it back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that brings me to the end.
Questions, council members?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, and Gil's not online, so.
I have comments.
So I, may I just?
Yes.
So one thing is that Councilmember Schizler did speak with me earlier. He obviously had a personal commitment, he couldn't make it here today, but he did say that he was perfectly fine with what was proposed, what backup he had seen, as he wanted to, basically the council to be aware of that.
Good, good. Other comments? Yes. Again, it's the great work the staff does. Thank you to you and your staff, all the staff. We see this presentation and all the projects we have coming up and that we're currently doing, and it is just amazing to me. I mean, I know what the city does and all the departments, whether you're doing construction or not, but today's focus was on these big projects. The only question I would have with all the work we're doing and all the projects in the pipe, why is Brian still smiling? It's just amazing the amount of work that you guys get done every day. And I'm talking about you, you've got a couple million dollar road project, you're doing all that, and someone will call up with a garbage can problem and you go out and you can talk to them. It's just amazing to me what you guys do out there. So thank you so much on that.
So there's a, in my mind, there's, I mean, there's a, a lot of differences between what we're doing now and what we did just a few years ago. But one of the key differences that I think is a, is a big takeaway for everybody is that we truly are thinking strategically now. We're identifying priorities that are goal-setting, we're doing strategic planning. Our budget priorities reflect those discussions. These projects reflect those priorities. We're truly taking a longer approach to things and thinking multiple years instead of just every summer we get together and do a whack-a-mole, like, okay, this truck has fallen apart or that, you know, we have to do this water main or whatever. We're truly thinking, oh, we're going to do this this year so that next year we can do this, and the following year we can do this. So there's, there's truly some strategy and forethought going into what we're doing and there's a path. And we know what it is we're trying to accomplish. And I, as a taxpayer, not as a mayor, but as a taxpayer, that gives me a lot more confidence that the city is on a track, that it's not just, you know, going day to day and, you know, what crisis comes up today and let's just survive till 5:00 and go home and start it all over again tomorrow. So I want to thank you for that. That's a shift. That's an organizational shift. And you folks have responded really, really well to that. Both the existing directors that have been here, the legacy folks, the directors that are still here are the ones that need to still be here. You guys have really stepped up and the, and the new folks on board have really adopted this approach. So I'm just proud of all of you that we're really going somewhere. We're not just, and I don't want to disparage what we did before, we did pretty good before, too, but we're taking a longer view. And I think by doing that, we're maximizing the impact of every tax dollar we get because it's going towards something that's going to support something else and something else. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fier, for your support. I mean, ultimately, we take direction from you and all the good stuff that's going on is testament to that, so.
No, I don't think so, but thank you. Okay, anything else? Council, we good? Directors, anything else? Okay, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all.